I just don't think about my comment. It's just when you got somebody sees something, they're gonna chase it. Man, yeah, that's just, you can't rush him to do that. That's the current thing. Well, this is good stuff. Damn, like a hot.
I don't know. I know Melvin Turner's other way. They are easy to talk to. Who are easy to talk to? If a kid gets mad and he thinks he's being bullied, and some guy's gonna get him, again, he will say something with his boss.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna get, I didn't wanna get.
A lot of backwood. I just, I didn't say a great amount. But good job.
All right, we ready to go. We got a long agenda before us. All right, we have now a communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And a list of the current vacancies is included with the agenda for this meeting. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the motion passes. A communication from the city manager requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of city-owned property containing sixty-seven acres located countryside where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and that motion passes. Are there any items listed on the agenda that need clarification or discussion? All right, we're now going to our briefings, and I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Council, and in just a second, I'll hand this off to Amelia and Paul to start walking our way through this. This is a fairly lengthy presentation as we go through because this is obviously not only our regular briefing, but also the briefing where we talk about the CIP and also debt issuances that are coming up, and we'll talk, obviously, a lot further regarding those. This is your monthly budget briefing, so as has been the case in the previous briefings, you will receive a brief overview of the current budget status as well as an update on our preparation of the FY '23 budget. That will include an update on revenue projections, an update on priority expenditures, an update on expenditure enhancements, and where we stand currently in development of the budget in terms of balance. And I'll give you a spoiler alert that we, needs outpace revenue right now, but that's okay. Obviously, this is normal at this point, and we will be progressing toward a balanced budget submission for you later in the spring. We will also be discussing, as mentioned, the FY '23 through '27 CIP, as well as a presentation on our debt information, both for the upcoming year as well as for the five-year CIP itself. And then we'll conclude with next steps in terms of both the budget development as well as next steps related to CIP. Amelia and Paul will walk us through most of this. Every once in a while, I'll interject along the way and would ask if you would please, if there are specific questions about anything that you see, obviously, ask at that point. Otherwise, since there's a lot of material to get through, if we can get through all of the material and then kind of hold questions till the end, if that will work as well. So with that, turn it over to Amelia.
I know, remove that briefly. First, good morning to everyone. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Board, members of city council.
Good morning.
Seems like these first Mondays come closer and closer together. Farther we get into budget development. I will start us here on slide three this morning, and we'll talk about the overview of our current fiscal year. You'll recall that as we look at our current fiscal year, we started the fiscal year approximately 3.2% over our fiscal '21 adopted budget. Of that amount, excuse me, of that amount, local taxes are 68.3% of that total, or about $210 million. I'm pleased to report to you today that we continue to see that locally derived revenues are performing well. Through the end of January of fiscal '22, our local taxes are 6.2% ahead of target, and they've increased by 10.3% compared to the same period in fiscal 2021, being the end of January. The drivers of this are real estate, sales tax, prepared food and beverage tax, and transient occupancy tax. All the revenues are 10% ahead of the same period in fiscal '21. We continue, of course, to monitor our local revenues and other revenues on a monthly basis. Shown also here on this slide, our expenditures through the end of January increased by 5.4%. Aside from the increased expenditures due to the compensation increases which were expected, the increases are due to several transfers, GRTC, capital projects, debt service, and grant fund, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, and RCPS. Excuse me. Likewise, our expenditures are monitored monthly, followed by discussions with departments as needed. As we look at our revenue dashboard on slide four, we continue to show this revenue dashboard separate from our expenditure dashboard. And first, we look at, as we've mentioned, all of our local taxes through January are performing well. Now 6.2% ahead of target, and this is driven primarily by the local taxes that were previously mentioned. The real estate tax, the sales tax, transient occupancy, prepared food and beverage, and all of our local taxes. As we look here today, we see that business license tax is showing a very significant percentage ahead of target, and that is due to some internal workings that are occurring. As we work with the commissioner's office, we understand that there are a number of backlog supplemental buildings that are, billings that are being processed, which show revenue accumulating at a faster pace. The true trend of performance will continue to be monitored and shared as February and March are our highest months of collection for this tax. Next, on slide five, we look at our expenditure dashboard. Overall, the general fund is 6.9% below target, and that is a favorable position to be in. Public safety overtime continues to be an area to monitor. It is 165% over its target at the end of January. That is driven by operations within fire and jail. That is not dissimilar to what we discussed with you last month. Vacancies and retirements are the major causes of these overtime drivers. We also continue to monitor our Children's Services Act expenditures as they are higher, a higher area driving that target overage, and we look at alternative private day as the driver of that expense. Again, we anticipate we will need to bring before you an action for you to take to increase the revenue expectation as well as the expenditure budget in the spring for these expenditures. Worker compensation remains ahead of target and is being monitored monthly as usual. Expenses related to medical claims continue to drive this being ahead of target. Our salary lapse or turnover savings are trending higher than the prior year as well as the prior three-year average. Generations of these savings are led, again, by the police department and general services due to those vacancies as we have previously discussed. Our operating contingency continues to be below target and the prior three-year average due to the necessity of some transfers, which we also previously shared.
Mayor Lee?
Yes, sir.
If I might ask Ms. Merchant a question, the, the, uh, large increase in the amount of salary lapse, is that mostly because of public safety shortages, or is it shortages of staff in other departments as well?
It's a combination of other departments as well, our public safety area, particularly fire leading the way and jail follow, following behind that. We're also seeing vacancy savings in our building maintenance facilities area, as well as across the organization, but those particular areas are among the highest.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Merchant.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We'll move on to slide six, and we'll look at our fiscal '22 key local tax performance projection. We're updating our projections of local tax performance, and we show a potential projection of exceeding the adopted budget by 4.7% or approximately $9 million. Personal property tax has been updated since last month. Our sales tax, prepared food and beverage, transient occupancy taxes are a combination of what leads the way in this projection beyond our budget. This projection, of course, is evaluated on a monthly basis as we close prior months and update our expectation based on the trends that we're seeing.
And I know there, there is some interest by some, by council, I think, to talk further about the personal property item as it relates to vehicles, and if we can hold, again, we'll come back to that discussion as we work our way through the CIP discussion, the debt discussion will come back, but I know there, I want to put a pen in there because I know there's some interest in talking further about that. Thank you.
As we move to slide seven, I just want to quantify that potential impact on the general fund. Should that $9.9 million projection hold, it would be adjusted down for the $45,000 that would be due to our downtown district taxes, approximately $431,000 that would be due to Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, leaving a remaining net balance of $9.4 million, which would be shared 40%, 60% with our school division, leaving approximately $5.6, $5.7 million for the city. On slide eight, we move forward with our local tax estimate for fiscal year 2023 and an update as to the prior month's estimates that we shared with you. Again, these estimates are updated every month as we go through this process and bring back a, an update to you. This month, we are looking at a potential 7.9% increase in local taxes over the adopted fiscal '22 budget, or approximately $16.7 million. This assumption does not show any potential impacts due to general assembly action related to local tax impacts, the grocery tax, nor the impacts of any vehicle tax relief. We continue to monitor general, general assembly actions as the weeks progress. Based on anticipated performance, again, 7.9% in total could be the additional growth in our local taxes for fiscal '23. On slide nine, we quantify that in terms of the impact on Renoke City Public Schools, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, our downtown district taxes, and lastly, the city, a potential $9.6 million increase year over year would impact city expenditures and revenues. As we look at slide 10 and the total revenue picture, other revenues have included a cost adjustment as well. However, they are decreases, as you see pictured here on slide 10. The net revenue growth in total for the general fund would be reduced to a 4.9% increase or approximately $15.07 million. And these adjustments are based on the trends that we're seeing in the non-local taxes in the current fiscal year. On slide 11, there is only one potential fee adjustment that we bring before you today, that being the elimination of library fines and fees. In particular, this is a result of some work that the library has been doing within the consortium that involves Bodotoc County, Salem, Roanoke County, and the city. It is an effort certainly to respond to COVID impacts that have affected our citizens, and also to address what is perceived as an equity issue, that some who are unable to pay those fines, excuse me, receive some relief from those fines, and also to ensure that our youngest population do not have barriers to their education because they are not able to check those books out and use those resources within our library system. There would still be an element of accountability. Should someone not return a book or a resource, they would still be held accountable for paying the cost of that resource, but not the fine or the fee for lateness. This is desire to be a joint. This is desire to be a joint effort between everyone that is within the consortium.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to comment on this one. I, as someone whose wife thinks I already own way too many books, I've been trying in recent years to check out more books from the library. And as a matter of fact, I have one that was automatically renewed. My due date was extended actually until Wednesday, and I got an email this morning that they've extended it again even further, although I only have about 20 pages, and I think I'll be turning this book back in tomorrow. But I'm just saying that they've come up with a very good system to help people avoid being late by using an automated system of some sort to extend the deadlines for people. So I just think that's really helpful.
Just by way of acknowledging the expenditure impact on the libraries, it is estimated that it costs about $4,500 a year to send those late notices out, and it takes about 134 hours of staff time to prepare those notices to be sent out. So again, decreasing the revenue expectation by some amount that is yet to be fully estimated, but also decreasing the expenditures as well. Okay, I'm going to pause here for any questions prior to turning this over to Paul for the next component of our briefing.
All right, thank you.
Finders have grown quite thick this time of year. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, members of City Council, a good morning. My goal this morning is to give you an overview of the current status of the expenditures included in the fiscal year '23 budget, and later I'll discuss the updates to our Capital Improvement Program, or CIP. I want to remind the citizens who may be watching that they can download this presentation from the Management and Budgets website under the section called Budget Development. This may come in handy later when some of the slides might be difficult to read in the live feed. And previously, I had given you all a handout with some larger font as well on those particular slides. The first subject we'll discuss, let me move the slide forward here. The first subject we'll discuss is our approach with compensation. We recently kicked off a compensation study that is not expected to conclude until after the budget is adopted. Therefore, we still have a lot of work to do to determine strategically what is best for us to fund. In the meantime, though, we're reserving $7.7 million towards compensation as a planning figure. To give everyone a sense of the decisions that will be made to utilize this planning figure, a 1% pay increase is approximately $1,035,000, and that is a 1% pay increase for all city employees. Next, we have the implementation of the Public Safety STEP Plan, which initially we had said that we would implement over two years, but this figure that we have on the board would be for full implementation for one year. This number from our previous estimates has grown to 1.8 million, and I definitely want to emphasize the word estimate on this slide at this time as we continue to run our calculations on the cost of that. Next, we have the $15 per hour minimum wage adjustment, which we are estimating at this point to cost an additional $325,000. And then lastly on the list is a 457 plan match, which just for illustration, we've shown what a $10 per pay period would cost. It would be $400,000. A 457 plan is similar to a businesses 401K or an educational 403B, so just so everyone is familiar with that. On Slide 13, this provides our listing of our general fund expenditure adjustments. First, we talk about the adjusted base. The adjusted base amount as well as our currently included nondiscretionary and discretionary supplementals. The adjusted base includes level funding of all operating accounts within the general fund. The only items that are different from last year's budget would be changes due to salary changes as a result of employee turnover and health and dental costs, as well as VRS retirement rate changes. Let me explain these adjustment differences for a few minutes before I begin discussing the supplementals. Our fiscal year '22 budget is $307.63 million, and our fiscal year '23 adjusted base is $307.8 million or an increase of about $186,000. This is related to turnover savings of about $770,000 additional costs of about $506,000 for health and dental and additional costs of about $450,000 related to the VRS rate increases. These are items we treat, we treat as supplemental requests, but rather instead incorporate them right away into our new adjusted base. So let me talk about these three base adjusting items. Each year, we load the actual personnel into our budget system in December, and we won't make changes from that point forward. Vacant positions are budgeted at the bottom of their respective pay grade. The fact that we have turnover savings in our budget of about $770,000 is a reflection on the number of vacancies or new hires we currently have. Health and dental costs were also increased $505,500. At our last briefing, it was assumed that there would be no additional cost to the city for health and dental. However, further analysis determined that it would in fact be necessary to raise these rates in order to continue to hold employees level for their contributions. Therefore, this year, the city will increase its contribution towards health and dental costs by 5% or $395 annually per employee. Now, with respect to the VRS or Virginia Retirement System, which is utilized primarily by the Sheriff's Department, there is a 4.89% rise in contribution rates from 17.2% to 22.51%. This rate increase added an additional $450,000 to our base figure. These three differences in total added $186,000 to our base. Now for the proportion you are probably most interested in hearing about is the supplemental request items. As typically done, we've split these into either nondiscretionary or discretionary. The nondiscretionary is going to include either contractual or uncontrollable inflation cost increases as well as services that are critical in our strategic planning objectives. This is not to say that the discretionary items are also not very important to us. We have already reduced this current list, you see, by about $2.6 million. In other words, we've arrived at the next stage of balancing this budget and picked off many of the low-hanging fruit so far. You may want to refer back to this slide as we move through the next few slides to specifically identify some of the supplemental increases that are currently being included. These next six slides illustrate some of the main supplemental requests approved within each priority. Not all items are listed because they may be too immaterial or routine to mention. You will certainly have access to the full list when we publish our recommended budget document. I don't plan on reading every bulleted item, but will mention just a few as we move through these slides. Slide 14 illustrates supplemental requests currently included in the areas of education, human services, and economy. Under the education priority, we have the Roanoke City Public Schools funding, which is determined by a formula based on our local taxes. Under the human services priority, we have the addition of an administrative support person for the Department of Social Services attorney. We also have an increase in the cost for cremation services. And under the economy priority, we have the addition of a senior economic development specialist. On the next slide, Slide 15, under the community safety priority, we have the jail medical contract increase. It's about $88,000 for that supplemental. We have the firefighter's uniform replacements, which is approximately $70,000. We have a deputy emergency manager coordinator position. And then we have, lastly, the police less lethal equipment, which is related to acquisition of tasers and batteries for tasers and practice tasers. Under Slide 16, the infrastructure priority, we have several technology contract increases, which amount to about $515,000. Cybersecurity testing or virtual chief information security officer, additional technology under cybersecurity. We have bridge inspection and maintenance inflationary increases. And then for the fleet department, we have several increases related to sublet vendor parts, accident repair, fuel inflation, PPE, shop supplies, and uniforms. In total, all of these increases are approximately $1.2 million. Of particular note is the fleet fuel inflation, which we would assume a per gallon rate of 268 and moving to 450. Of course, this is a planning figure at this time, but that would equate to about $552,000. Under the livability priority, there is a supplement to increase neighborhood improvement grants by $42,000. This is actually a reinstatement of those funds. We have a Roanoke Valley Resource Authority rate increase. Is there proposing a rate going from $53.50 per ton to $55 per ton? And then we have the addition of a security guard at the libraries, and this is actually a restoration of that security guard position, which was reduced during the pandemic. Under the good government priority, we have a whole host of technology maintenance increases for a variety of departments. There is targeted professional development and training increases. We have a budget system enhancement, the creation of the assistant to the city manager position. This is actually a restoration of that position. We've included some funds for paid internships. And then lastly, wellness program increase, and this is actually reimbursed by our provider, so that is actually net neutral in cost. On Slide 19, highlights some of the more significant increases to external agencies. Visit Virginia Blue Ridge allocation increased as a result of an increase in the transient occupancy tax. The transient occupancy tax is 8%, of which Virginia Blue Ridge receives 3%. For the Blue Ridge behavioral healthcare contribution is based on the Virginia Department of Health's recommended contribution towards community service boards, or CSBs. The increase in the requested amount is related to additional state general fund investments in CSBs for funds to discharge individuals for state psychiatric hospital and additional investments for the STEP VA initiative intended to reform Virginia's behavioral health system. For service district taxes are collected on behalf of the downtown and Williamson Road districts. An increase is anticipated for fiscal year '23 related to the downtown district specifically. The Western Virginia Regional Facility Authority is expecting an increase due to the increase in debt service payments. As budget development progresses, we will continue to make adjustments in this category as we learn the required budgetary needs of our external agency partners. On Slide 20, our non-departmental enhancements include areas of city budget that don't fit within one of the other priorities and often are not associated with a single department. For debt service, we are preliminarily including an increase of $1 million. I'd like to remind everyone that we like to grow, gradually grow, how much we budget for debt service in anticipation of future years that will have much higher payment requirements. By growing debt service $1 million in fiscal year '23, we will have approximately $2.7 million for one-time needs, which Amelia will talk about more later. For civic facilities, we show the subsidy growing in relation to the planned debt service reduction. We will cover all of our enterprise funds in greater detail in our April briefing. The Greater Roanoke Transit Company, GRTC, or Valley Metro, is planned to be level funded. Next on the list, you'll see the $7.7 million reserve for compensation that I mentioned in my first slide. We will again, this year, grow workers' compensation and funding for reserves by $250,000 each. And you'll see salary lapse is level funded. It's a negative budget because it represents the savings generated as a result of vacancies from natural employee turnover. And lastly, the other category, which is a variety of things, such as the Line of Duty Act, other post-employment benefits, dental, extended illness, medical, payroll accrual, reclass contingency, termination leave, employment wages, and many grants and donations contingency. The reduction in this category is related to a reserve set aside for mental, medical, and dental costs. Since we increased the amount that we set aside for employee fringe calculations, we didn't need as much to be set aside in these reserves, and they were therefore reduced. Slide 21 brings us to our current balancing status of a negative $4,774,670. We will continue over the coming months working to reduce this difference and bring you a balanced recommended budget on April 18. No doubt, this next phase of budget development will be a challenge as we look to dive deeper into the supplements and understand them better. We'll look for savings within the base budget, and we'll hope for economic improvements that will lead to improvements in our revenues.
Yeah, and while Paul switches to the next slide, I wanted to just clarify something he said earlier which relates directly to this because obviously, we have to present to you a proposed balanced budget. So all those items we just went through are, at this moment, items that we're considering to include, but obviously, we're not balanced yet. So part of that is looking at those items. So we're sharing with you what those are, but those lists will change as we work our way through the rest of the budget.
Slide 22 highlights some of the items not funded. Right now, a big known for us is any general assembly actions that will either increase costs due to unfunded mandates or reduce revenues. We will continue to follow developments over the coming months and may need to adjust our budget as a result of their actions. Fleet capital base funding was reduced two years ago by $550,000. We would like to build this back into the base if possible. Last year, it wasn't. So instead, we opted to fund it with one-time funds, and that may be a strategy we utilize again this year. Technology capital has funded funding needs beyond the base by about $1.5 million. This is another candidate for one-time funding sources. Items that have been requested but excluded in an attempt to narrow the budget gap total about $2.6 million. While there are so many good ideas that were submitted, we simply cannot fund everything. An example of items excluded include converting part-time positions to full-time or creating new positions altogether. Or items such as computer skill training at libraries, wireless printing at libraries, the addition of a logistics officer in the fire department, or a GIS planner position for emergency management, scientific temperature monitoring equipment for heat island study and snow removal planning, enhancements to hiring and snow removal planning, enhancements to hiring technology and community engagement software and initiatives, et cetera. So these items have already been removed from the budget in an attempt to get to where we are today. At this point, I'll pause for any questions before we move on to the financial advisors' presentation.
Mr. Beszcz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Paul, for helping us understand all this. Back on slide 17, one of the items under livability is a temporary combination inspector to full-time. Help me understand what a combination inspector is.
That's for the folks that do the building inspections. So instead of someone being specialized, for example, just in residential construction, they also can look at non-residential construction. So, and that's just, we use combination inspectors instead of having them sort of siloed in those particular areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Merchant and Paul and the entire team. I really appreciate the briefing that you all have brought forward. The one thing that I would suggest, I know Mr. Kyle recommended holding the questions until the end for expediency, which I can appreciate that, but I tend to think that we need to ask the question that we go along to make sure that they're in context. I think Mr. Beszcz did, you know, interject a couple of times, which it just makes sense to do that, because I was having a hard time with one of them, and then through the whole thing, it was, you know, I couldn't follow, which I could have stopped, but I was trying to, to, you know, do what Mr. Kyle had asked, just so we could get through it. But, so I don't have many questions because they're all kind of jumbled up now, but number, on page 13, on slide 13, on the discretionary supplements, I was trying to follow along when you mentioned each category. And the one particular one that I wrote down, just as an example, is community safety. When you were talking about that supplement, you said $88,000. I was looking at 71,427. Is that not, so I'm trying to understand how, how to read your report.
Yeah, and in particular, you're wondering which one of these supplements were discretionary or non-discretionary.
Yeah, which one, I mean, where do the numbers come from? Because the numbers that you were giving us do not match the numbers that we were getting on this report. So I'm wondering, are those just your numbers, or should I be following this discretionary supplement report?
Yeah. Most of these items in the safety priority that were added are considered non-discretionary. So the jail medical contract increase, that is a contractual increase, of course, so that is considered non-discretionary.
And you gave a figure of 88,000. Where, where did that come? Is it on this report? I mean, if it's something you have, that's fine.
Yes, it's built into the $363,000.
So you were just extracting numbers from these larger numbers?
Exactly.
Okay, and that was, and I could have asked that question sooner. I would have understood that, because I was trying to find those numbers so that I could follow along with the report and kind of get them in my head, but anyway, that's fine. That's fine.
So basically, most of the items in this priority are considered non-discretionary.
Okay, and the numbers, you just pulled out, extracted some of the other, some of the numbers, just as examples or something?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
The one item on this list that is essentially listed as discretionary would be the deputy emergency management coordinator position.
So, okay, so the discretionary, that totals 71,000, that is correct, or is that?
Yeah, the deputy emergency management coordinator position is the, is the only item that is considered discretionary. Everything else on that list is considered non-discretionary.
Okay, so when I go back to look at this, I can understand it. So the, so the 88,000, for the non-discretionary, the supplement, that was actually a part of the 363,000?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand it when I go back to look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what we're doing is, I'm hoping that as we go through it, if there's a question on interpretation, just interpretation right there, we'll find it, but if your question is in detail, then I think that's what we want to wait until we get, till we get through most of this. So that was the reason we wanted to, to hold off until we get to the end, and that's why I allowed Mr. Beszcz's questions to come forward. I thought they were just a matter of interpretation, what a number meant, what a situation meant. If you got a detailed question, I hopefully, we would wait till we finish or jot those questions down. That was the purpose of, I ain't going through that and trying to get through this in a timely manner. So anybody else have any questions that they want to ask?
And there will be more opportunities for questions towards the end as well, of course.
And we're going to transition into the discussion of the CIP, as well as hear from our financial advisors, and I'll echo what the mayor said again. Through this presentation, obviously, if anything we present, you need some clarifying information at that point. Feel free to ask that. It's really, if you're, if you want to engage in a broader kind of policy-level discussion, hold that please until we get to the end. But certainly, don't, don't hesitate as we go through if there's something that just doesn't make any sense to you as you, as you work our way through. Couple of things you'll notice, I think, as we go through this is, one, of course, we receive an update similar to this from our financial advisors each year, really to help us and help you understand how it is that we may be able to pay for our multi-year capital improvements program, and certainly will benefit from that today as well. Hopefully, the other thing you'll notice as we work our way through, am I stalling now? So hopefully, as we work our way through this presentation, you will also see some of what Chris Chidham presented to you a couple of meetings ago, as well as what you saw at the joint school board meeting, which is a greater level of transparency in what's being proposed. So now, you'll actually see discussion regarding the cash or grant-funded capital projects, not only the debt-funded. You'll see a lot more detail where, in the past, we might have said schools, or we might have said fire master plan. You'll now see the specific projects as they're known in there. And as Paul has mentioned, all of that information is available for folks online as well. At your space, you should have the full presentation, plus I think there's a couple of individual handouts that are stapled together that give you a little more clarity, as well as the current CIP that we're working under as well, just so you have all of that as reference. It's all in the presentation, but it's just a way to provide you additional detail, if you will. So with that, I'm turning it over to, turning it over to David. All right, very good.
Good afternoon, or good morning, I should say. Another few more minutes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Again, David Rose, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. By all means, if there's some things that need to be addressed, just stop me, and I will do what I can, but I'd like to move forward. Before I start with my actual slides, I would like to say, the only reason we're here today is because the city is in very strong financial position. If that were not the case, we would not be talking about recommending doing additional capital and working towards your multi-year capital program. You heard a few moments ago where the city does estimates and it does planning. As a result, you have built up additional reserves and cushions, what have you, and when we, with your blessing and all, move to meet with the rating agencies at the end of this month, we fully expect to have excellent results with the rating agencies. We expect that that report that always is publicly done, and I know the city manager sends that out to y'all shortly after we're able to release it, will talk about very solid and strong management practices. We have, of course, seen your audit. It is a clean audit. It's what you would expect from a city working this way, and between Amelia and Paul and Brent and Chris and others, the city has got a deep bench, is well-run, and I will tell you that after 40 years of doing this, I don't always say that to all of your colleagues out there. That's just my role. So if I could just then move into, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move into the slides and try to move quickly. So again, here you see, in terms of a little bit of an overview, we've been asked to look at the 20 to 22 to 27 fiscal years and speak to the ability for the city to meet all of your debt policies and other things that, again, keep you so highly rated. In addition, we have looked at these projects. We do not get into the veracity of the projects themselves, but we make sure that anything that's being funded is equal to, or doesn't go beyond, the useful life of these projects. And as a result of that, we're not going to be paying for anything beyond its useful life, and that's the way you'd expect a well-run city to operate, and that's the way we've been operating and will continue under these approaches. So as I mentioned, we will be talking to the rating agencies at the end of the month, I believe it's the 31st, and then we expect to enter the credit markets in April. And so again, we'll have, we hope, some very good results on or about May 1st. So with that said, the 22 to 27 CIP, we recognize that the city has continued to do a very good job of allocating resources to make sure that we can take care of that debt service. And that way, you're going to see that in the next few minutes. Again, we wish every city would operate this way, but at least for your purposes, you do that. In terms of what we include and don't include as it relates to the projects, you'll see here, we've included all of what we call the general fund-supported city projects, and you could see underneath there, that's, you'll see the general project, fleet, and the civic What we don't include, but certainly have accounted for, is the Roanoke City Public Schools, as well as the stormwater. In both of those cases, the revenue sources are there. Stormwater, for example, is a self-supporting enterprise fund. It works that way, and it's been working that way. So again, while their debt is being done, the actual dollars to pay for that comes from the actual users of the stormwater. So it gets taken away from the general fund, if you would, in terms of the stress. It doesn't put any stress on the general fund. The schools, as you well know, you have your, your existing program and strategies that have worked you well, and as a result, those dollars are set for that as well. What we do, though, is when we show you the debt levels and the debt metrics, we incorporate the schools and always have. So there's nothing new, for those of you that are not new faces to me, and I'm not a new face to you. This is the way we've been doing it for years now, and it's worked very well for the city. So the last bullet there is the actual number that we're going to be talking about funding. It's roughly $113 million over basically the six-year period. So we have been working with staff, obviously, as I mentioned, they are terrific to work with, very easy to work with, they get it, and I'd like to think that hopefully, we're in sync with them. And in doing this, we've come up with amongst a variety of choices and options, two scenarios to talk with you today. One is what we'll call the traditional borrowing approach, and that has been done by all of us at different times. And then, as it needs, there's what we call the strategic funding approach, and that is what we're going to talk about today and recommend. It's what we use, a bond anticipation note with a very modest restructuring. Said another way, we're going to shave some peaks of debt service to make the cash flows work that much better for multiple years, and you're going to see that in the next few moments. Both of those scenarios, however, are kept up between the white lines, if you would, if you think of it as a road, by what we call a 10-year payout ratio requirement. And that simply means this: if you think of, if you're fortunate enough to have a home and you have a 30-year mortgage, after the first 10 years, the question is, how much of that principal, how much of that? So let's assume if you own a home and it's a $100,000 loan, you basically are hopeful that, in the case of you and I, we hope that 25%, 25% or $25,000 of that mortgage, if you would, is paid off in the first 10 years. We at the city have a policy that 60% of that debt is paid off in 10 years. So we pay our debts off much more rapidly than we would if we were a homeowner. So in that case, $60,000 is paid off. We follow all of that under either scenario, and the reason we do that is because, again, we are perpetual. We're always going to be here, we, meaning the city. So the idea is, let's pay our debts off quickly, recognizing there's always going to be other needs down the road. And we follow that, and both of these strategies both follow that, they exceed that, in fact, and that's where we want to be to keep you in that good position. Because when I look at this, and I've worked with some localities upwards of 35 years, the question is not just where we're going to be next year, where are we going to be five, 10, and 15, and 20 years from now? And the decisions we make now are going to be critical to where we are in those next decade. Lastly, I mentioned there'll be a small restructuring. It's de minimis. It's about $400,000. It cleans up some of the peaks, and by doing that, it actually has a big impact on how the cash flows work, and I'll show you that in a few moments. Okay. So if we're going to talk about funding approaches, we thought we would try on one page to give you the key assumptions we've made for what you're about to see. With regard to interest rates, while the Federal Reserve is talking about moving those rates up, and they're doing it on or about March 16th, March 17th, we've already factored in the thought that rates are going to go up. So we've put that into the equation here. Could it go up more than that? Sure. Could it be less than that? We hope, but nevertheless, we have, as a staff, working with your staff, have put that into the numbers you're going to see. And so we've assumed that the borrowing in 2022, the one I talked about that'll occur in April, close about May 1, will be closer to 3% versus where we were a year ago, under 2%. So again, if we were to go to the market today, we would be lower than that 2.8%, but we're not going to the market today. So that's the first point. The second, as we did the planning for subsequent years, we put in a 4% interest rate. Only time will tell if that's high or low, but we're hopeful, again, that this incorporates what the Federal Reserve wants to see. They want to see rates go up, but they only want to see them up so much over the next several years. Amortization, that means how long we paying this off. Once again, for those of us who are fortunate, we have mortgages, they're typically 30 years. We at the city typically pay ours off in 20 years. So not only do we pay it off faster, but we also pay it off, again, in less years, and we're going to recommend, continue to do that. The one piece, though, is that even faster, and I mentioned earlier, making sure we never borrow for anything that's longer than its useful life. So we have fleet, and Paul and Amelia can give you the details on that, but the fleet amounts that we're borrowing for, we are going to pay that off over seven years, again, to be safe, to be careful, and not to, again, have debt that's beyond the average life of the fleet service. Civic Center, once again, is level, but debt service, level debt service. That's equivalent to how we do our home loans. Basically, it's the same for those 30 years. In this case, it'll be the same for the 20 years. However, like I said, with the city projects, we pay it off even faster and more front-loaded. Again, that's what allows us to be in very good shape with regard to taking on new debt, paying it off quickly. So we mentioned as well our bond anticipation note strategy. We have assumed that we would do a 2.5% interest rate for the bands. We've assumed they will be three years in length. They can always be paid off faster. You may recall that because you let us do some of that just-in-time funding, we did that very successfully twice now, we paid the debt off faster and converted it when interest rates were very favorable. So we're hoping for the same, but not planning on having the same results. So we're trying to be extra careful. I think that basically exhausts a lot of the key assumptions, and if I could, let me just go to the actual projects, and you could see there, we've lumped them together. I mentioned that $113 million is really what we're talking about, and you can see by fiscal year, starting in the '22 fiscal year we're in right now, what we'd be looking at. And then finally, the bullet below in that, in the green, we say equivalent penny analysis and debt service is based solely upon, again, that $113 million. So let's get to the essence of what we are looking at, what the challenge is under either scenario, and it's the reason why I believe your staff is scenario, and it's the reason why I believe your staff is always thinking ahead as it relates to trying to put dollars aside for future debt service. And you'll see, because if we're in the first scenario, we do the traditional approach, we will need the equivalent of almost 13 pennies. Of penny being, I'm rounding off here, $500,000. That's after the adjustment with regard to schools. So we would need literally the equivalent in the first fiscal year of three pennies, almost five pennies in '24, and another five in '25. So effectively, all front-loaded, putting a whole lot of burden on the overall budget and the citizens. If we take the strategic approach, we see two things happen. Number one, the total equivalent pennies go down to nine pennies. And second, instead of needing upwards of five pennies literally twice, we never need more than two pennies. In fact, we're always under two pennies. And most importantly, in 2023, we're less than a penny. So that's the first takeaway, and that's without using any of the excess debt service dollars that the city has smartly put away year after year. So then if we go to what is going to, we hope, happen, and get all of your blessing as part of the up the budget, you'll notice in the traditional approach, with using some of those excess dollars, the overall impact goes from literally 13 pennies roughly, down to about 6.5. And then if we do it with the strategic approach, we go down to 2.5 pennies. And you'll notice the 2.5 pennies, if you go quickly, it's a lot of zeros until 2028. So what we have effectively done here, by being strategic, by putting dollars away, by continuing this approach of best practices, is we have gotten this knocked down to some 2.5 pennies. And remember, I said earlier, not only is it 2.5 pennies, but it's assuming that interest rates are considerably higher than they are today, or may even be in the future. So we like the fact that we've built in this extra degrees of conservatism. So for that said, I'd like to go over, if I could, some of the actual cash flows, and again, just let you visually see both of the scenarios. So on this page here, what we tried to do was to show you, in the first series of columns, your existing debt as it stands right now, principal, interest, and a total of about 14.9 million. That's what is actually the debt service for the fiscal year you're in now. Then in the middle would be the new debt service under the traditional approach. You'll notice, nothing kicks in in the first year, in this year that we're in. We kick in in 2023, which is, of course, almost here, July 1. And then you can see just the roll-up of those two sets of debts, the existing plus the proposed. The far right-hand side takes it to what it would become. And you'll notice there, just to pick one year, in 2025, it goes as high as 21.3 million, and yet in 2022, it's just under 15 million. So those increases that you'll see in a moment are what puts all that pressure on you in the traditional approach without doing anything of using excess dollars and not using anything strategically. Nevertheless, in doing this, on page 10, you'll see the blue highlight. That is to show you that in every year, we are exceeding that 60%, the 10% payout, excuse me, which is that 60% number. So that's just to let you know, the way we've set this up, we're always in compliance with the policy that you created, and we all did, and evolved to several years ago. So what does this do, then? Visually, I'm a visual person, so I thought, if we could, let's everyone see that, on the left-hand side in that graphic, if you think of it, that roughly $15 million that I talked about in FY '22, we basically took a line and said, if we just go straight across, and what is it, what's the future debt service over and above what you have basically been budgeting? Think of it this way: if you have a home, and you have a debt service that's, let's say, $1,000 a month, $12,000 a year, but then you want to take on a car payment, and that goes an extra $250, think of that light green as the $250. It's going above that line for several years. So in our case, you'll notice here, I said 2025, it goes up on the far right-hand side up to 21 million. It's some $6.5 million higher than it is today. That's what creates that really difficult situation in terms of cash flow. And then, on the next page, you can actually see those cash flows, and I'm not going to belabor it, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, but I'm just going to simply say, on the far right-hand side, you can see the equivalent penny impact. And the reason we say equivalent is that there may be other sources that the staff and you ultimately, if you take this approach, do, that gets away from real estate. But we just want to show it to you as if this were done by real estate only. This would be the impact. The reason we use equivalent, and we use real estate, is because these are recurring needs, and again, it's not one-time dollars that can take care of this. You're going to need these dollars for several years to come under this approach. So that's why we use this particular assumption, and we give it and state it that way. So if we go to the next page, what you'll see here is, with those excess dollars that staff has already been able to set aside and have, this green, the light green, is much more reduced, is much less burdensome, I should say. And the far-right-hand side shows that. On 2025, or in 2025, instead of being some $6.5 million over, you're now about a little over $3 million over. So again, we're chipping away at the extra burden by using these excess dollars. Nevertheless, on the next page, however, it shows we still have a hurdle, and that hurdle's about 6.5 pennies, as I said earlier in the short, quick summary. So we'd like to try to get away from that, and that's why we introduced the second scenario. And I'll get to that in a minute. Just one last thing before we do that. On this page, just wanted you to see that even with this approach, we're still meeting, if not exceeding, in a good way, all of your other debt policies. So you've got two other debt policies, you meet those. So again, when we go in front of the rating agencies, under either of these scenarios, we are telling them, we are adhering to our debt policies, we're not broaching them. I just wanted to point that out for all of you and for the folks that are listening. So as I mentioned a moment ago, we go to that second scenario. We have taken the same seven or eight pages, the same approach, if you would. So again, I won't belabor it, but assume here, if anyone can even read some of those small print, and I apologize, what we've done here is shown that with the existing debt, we've incorporated in the middle there, if you see if the flipper works, yep, a very small restructuring of $400,000 over a period of years. And if you want to know what the cost, quote-unquote, of that restructuring is, it's about $10,000 to $12,000. It's not a very expensive thing to do when we're borrowing $113 million. It's de minimis, but you're going to see in a few moments, it makes a huge difference with regard to cash flow and helping the city. So again, just to show you, as we did earlier, you'll notice all the blue ties to those 10-year payout ratio in instances, whether it's 2022, whether it's 2027, it doesn't matter, we're always going to be above that 60%, and that's what we want to be, that's what you expect us to be. And just again, we're staying within the white lines, if you think of it as a road. So the next page shows, without that excess debt service, where are we in terms of over that $15 million? In this approach, even as we hit the high-water mark in 2025, it is only $2 million versus earlier, we were some $6.5 million above. But again, the next page shows how we have to still come up with the equivalent of some nine pennies over basically a seven- or eight-year period. None of them go above two pennies in a given year, but still, it's nine pennies. So what we then did was, working with your staff, said, can we use some of that excess debt service dollars? And we can. And as a result of that, you'll notice here, we do not broach that until basically towards the end of the decade. And when we broach it towards the end of the decade, a good portion of that is really because we've used interest rates that are above where we are today. If we were to have interest rates akin to what we had last year, those numbers could very well go to almost zero. But again, we don't want to assume that. We want to play more of a worst-case, or more of maybe an expected case. So that expected case shows on the far-right-hand side, we will not need an equivalent penny until 2028, and that is the equivalent of one penny out there. And then again, about a penny or so more. So again, it's relatively speaking, very modest. If you'll still have me here at that point in 2028, I would not be surprised if it's going to be less than that, given the way your staff works and does its cash flows. It would not surprise me, but again, we've got a plan for that, because again, it could be more than that, but at least you get a sense of the order of magnitude in where we stand today in a very uncertain world. So a couple of more pages, I'll be done. And this simply shows, once again, that we are meeting all of our policies on the debt side, and we're comfortably meeting our policies. This one here, the policy, I like to call it our credit card. It's debt service versus expenditures, and it says we will not have more than 10 cents of every dollar go to debt service. And in this approach here, you see we're consistently under 8 cents per dollar. And that, again, we think is a very healthy thing to be, when you recognize we are factoring in not one year's debt service, but the next five or six years' debt service has all been layered in. So that's a very good sign. The right-hand side also still moves downward. That's debt versus just assessed value. So once again, we talked to the rating agencies. I feel like we come from a position of strength, because we've been planning, we've been strategic, and at the same time, we have the resources to take care of this without it doing undue burt dustus to your overall capital budget. Lastly, next steps, very quickly, as I've alluded to, we're going to have those calls the week of the 28th of March, the end of this month. I think the 31st is, for the moment, what we have. Then we look to sell these bonds and bands on or about the 18th. And at that point, we basically close roughly two weeks later, put all the legal documents together. But it's on that week of the 18th when the rates are set. I will point out that, right now, as you know, this, the world is very unstable. We could always sell bonds and notes, and in an act of war, the actual funding providers can walk away. That's something that I have not seen in a long time, but I've been doing this now my 39th or 40th year now. It just happened. Happened during the war in Kuwait. Some folks walked away, came back eventually. So we're not going to take this for granted, but indeed, if things do go south, if you would, we will certainly keep you abreast of what happens and what needs to be contemplated as Plan B. But for now, those are my remarks. Mayor, I'm happy, vice mayor, to answer any questions, and I thank you.
Any question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Rose, for giving us another very good report. And my question is, as we approach the rating agencies, does the fact that the census has now put our population back up over 100,000 have any effect on our rating?
Well, I think, number one, it's always nice to go above that, that sort of that line. As they look at credit ratings, there is a sort of element of a box there, they say, you know, you're in a new category, if you would. But at the same time, we've been talking to the rating agencies in the last couple of years, and showing them how dynamic Roanoke's been. While they haven't been able to be here, and they're still not yet able to be here because of COVID and some of their travel restrictions, we would like to get them here because we're hopeful that, once we really get out of this, and I don't have to even bring a mask up here, and I don't have to hear you through the mask, once we get through all that, and if some things, again, settle down worldwide, we continue to do what we're doing, meaning we, the city. Our goal is to say, look, we are of that size that we would like to ultimately be considered in AAA mode. We're right up against that, sort of that precipice. And so that's the eventual hope. You keep doing the things that you're doing, you're doing everything you can. They will say there's certain things that, in spite of being over 100,000, that are not easy to change quickly. We are aware of that. But they give us, and that's why that report will be very helpful, Councilman Bestbitch, because they make the comment, as they did last year, that your staff does a very, very good job of maximizing what you have as your resources, and that's about all you can ask for.
So we can just keep our fingers crossed for this year, but maybe in future years that, because that obviously impacts our rate as well going forward. It helps us to stay below that 4%.
It is. And our rates, when I say "our," meaning, you know, interest rates, of course, they're a function of the overall marketplace, but of course, they're also a function of the comfort that investors take in Roanoke's bonds, and notes, and other debts. And we've seen that to be very strong. We sell, and we trade in the open market very, very strongly, as you'd expect. And so, again, even if we were to eventually, and we get, if, when, we eventually get to that AAA, the differences are very, very small. I mean, almost indistinguishable from where you are. In a given day, the rates move within that range. But nevertheless, I think when economic development looks at the Roanoke area, we were fortunate to work on the RIFA project, they realize that the city's well-managed, the county's well-managed, and as a result of that, they take comfort in expecting and knowing that you're going to keep investing in the city and the region. So your ratings reflect that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tell me to understand, is that a yes or no to that, or maybe? You lost me a little bit on that. To Mr. Bestbitch's question.
I couldn't hear you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I apologize. What's that again?
I was asking, is there, is that a yes or no to his question, that now that we're 100,000 population, are they looking at us any different than?
I think the answer is yes. They look at you slightly different, because you hit another box in a category. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else says, Mr. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr. Rose, for the presentation. You kind of brought back days of finance in college. But I do have a question regarding the scenarios. Are, what approach are we going to take? Are we, are we taking the traditional approach, or are we going to take the?
We're recommending that you take the ban approach that we have, because, again, it allows us the flexibility to continue to have those built-up debt service really do the most for you over the long run. Again, you've got a very substantial, you know, capital program and a lot of investment, and I think this is the best way to do it, particularly during a COVID environment where you're trying to keep as little pressure on, if possible, the citizens. So this seems to us to be the most strategic.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions for members of council?
And so I want to thank David and his team for helping us to get to this point and get this far, as we take this information and then start to continue to work on what we'll bring forward with the CIP. David and his team have now shown you how, a couple of different ways we can pay for, what it is that we need to include in the CIP. Paul's going to actually walk you quickly through the actual projects, so that you know what those dollars, we've been talking a lot about dollars, now we want to talk a little bit about what those dollars will actually purchase.
Thank you. Through all this discussion we just had with Mr. Rose, we are addressing one very important part of the capital improvement program, and that is debt. We tend to focus on debt because it shapes our long-term commitment of paying off bonds. However, we recognize that not all capital projects are funded with debt. So let me take this moment to focus on the projects that are cash or grant funded. Our next CIP document will certainly do a better job of identifying all capital projects showing all projects expected to exceed $250,000. For our discussion today, though, I wanted us first to highlight the main projects influenced by cash or grant funding sources, and we'll get to the bond funding projects next. You have a separate handout that illustrates the funding for these items, and those were all handed out prior to the discussion today. Cash funded projects are typically ongoing and routine, yet still represent significant infrastructure investments. These are mainly in the areas of annual bridge maintenance, annual street paving, fleet capital replacement, technology capital improvements, capital building maintenance, and then our one large grant item on the list is under the Parks and Rec master plan, the Eureka Recreation Center, which is an $8 million project that we anticipate funding through So next, we will dive into the actual CIP projects that represent the figures that Mr. Rose gave to you just a minute ago. In an effort to provide more details on specific CIP projects, this slide has become a bit difficult to read, so hopefully our folks at home have brought up the slide deck from the management budgets website under budget development. You all have, of course, the larger documents with the attachments, as well as another listing of the CIP as it was approved last year for comparison as we move through these. The changes from our last approved CIP are included in shaded cells on this table. To provide you with a little background about the CIP process, we begin in January, hearing from departments about the needs and wants for the upcoming five years. We then prioritize those items and determine the affordability and timing. This last step represents where we are today in this process. The two different shades in this table represent our priorities, yellow being the more critical and pink being important enough for us to want to include it. There are, of course, items not included at this time, and I'll show those to you in the next few slides. I won't go through each item in the table because we've covered these through multiple prior briefings already. I do want to focus on the changes, though. The first item I'll talk to you about is the 13th Street Southwest over Norfolk Southern Railway Bridge, which will require an additional $2 million for this ongoing project. And if you have any questions, such as where a bridge is, I have Luke Pugh, our city engineer, and Mark Jamison, Director of Public Works, in the chambers with us to help us with those Coming into view in the fifth year, we can see 1.25 million for A&E and right-of-way cost for the, in relation to the Melrose over Peters Creek Bridge project, which is anticipated to cost 10.75 million in its entirety. In our previous CIP, we had $4 million going towards Parks and Rec Master Plan in fiscal year '23, and 2.3 million in fiscal year '24, and nothing for libraries. We now have adjusted this to $750,000 in fiscal year '23, and 2.4 million in fiscal year '24 for the Washington Park Pool, and $1 million in fiscal year '24 for a skate park. Timing of the skate park, of course, will be contingent upon first completing the Wasina Bridge. Cost estimates will also be refined in future CIPs. We have also added $1.2 million in fiscal year '27 for Parks and Recreation capital maintenance. This identifies the need we have to prop up many of our aging facilities. We have also added a new library project to the list, which includes Phase Two of the Belmont branch at a cost of $300,000 in fiscal year '23, and 1.7 million in fiscal year '24. Skipping down to the next yellow shaded line on the list, we have 1.0 million added for street paving. As you'll recall from the previous slide, street paving is typically cash funded. This year, we have included a portion of it to be bond funded in order to ensure we accomplish our goals of repaving all city straits within a 20-year cycle. Additional funds are necessary as the cost of paving one mile has increased due to inflation and additional ADA requirements for curb cut, cuts, and ramps. Moving to slide 26, the next item in pink is not an increase in funding, but rather a shift forward of the implementation timeline. There has been a desire to begin working towards the replacement of our accounting system sooner. An RFP process will be commencing soon, although we are currently using a vendor called Advantage. Through the RFP process, we may select a different vendor and product and ultimately rename this CIP project. Other technology additions to our list were also considered critical, including an additional $170,000 towards police and jail records management systems, an additional $700,000 for network cabling, an additional 2.3 million between fiscal year '24 and '27 for an HR talent management system, and an additional $750,000 for internet ring expansion. Our fire facility master plan has funding already established for Fire Station Two, but needs an additional $500,000 in fiscal year '23 related to A&E costs. Other projects that have been added and are shaded in pink indicating they're not as critical but still very important to us includes a women's locker room renovation at the Public Works Service Center for $430,000, as well as new vehicle wash house and refueling station for $3.9 million. Projects specifically identified for building maintenance needs includes HVAC structural projects for $625,000, renovations for the magistrate's office for $755,000, and lastly, 1.45 million to build out the old law library space for use by the Commonwealth Attorney. Lastly, on slide 27, we cover the projects not currently programmed nor funded in the CIP schedule that was provided to you. On this list, we have the library master plan project for the countryside branch of 7.15 million, curb gutter and sidewalk maintenance, which is an annual $335,000 additional ask for that, streetscape improvements or traffic signal modernization of 750,000 annually, technology capital, public safety mobile radios, fire facility master plan, training facility, and Fire Station Number Six expansion. We have a new employee parking lot at the Public Works Service Center. Again, these are items not included. And then lastly, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Fallon Park Pool, Preston Recreation Center, and Rivers Edge, which is the next phase of that project. That concludes my remarks on the CIP. I can turn it over to Amelia, or do we want to take questions at this point? I'll turn it over to you.
Any questions?
Hold on. Yes, sir. One question. I might ask a crazy question, but the 13th Street Southwest, the construction in 2024, 2 million. Are we, can we get additional funding from the RV TPO as well?
It might be a more question. Yeah. Certainly, any grant funding that is available for us, we would certainly pursue that.
Okay, so this number is without any grant funding?
That is correct. Yeah. And of course, any of the projects, we will always pursue grant funding to the extent possible. And of course, we love it when that happens because that means it frees up capacity for, you know, either it eases our debt service requirements or allows us to fund other projects.
Okay.
And that'll be especially true with, obviously, as more details come out with the federal infrastructure, we'll see if any of these projects qualify. You know, I've been holding out hope for the Wasina Main Street Bridge since it's such an expensive undertaking. Unfortunately, many of our bridges don't fall under the state system. That's why we take care of the bridges at our taxpayers' cost, and that sometimes excludes them from some of those, but as Paul said, we'll be pursuing every one of those options as we.
Okay, so all these numbers without grants?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Really good example of that, as you remember, in the CIP we had a couple of years ago, we included the full cost of the transit transfer station, and of course, 90% of that ended up being paid for through the Federal Transit Authority, so, but we had to initially anticipate that we might not secure those funds.
Maybe help us out on time if you can.
My portion talks about additional funding that we would need, so I'll talk through that very quickly. As David presented, we have two options for further consideration for debt issuance in fiscal '23, the traditional approach, and the 20-year bond issuance. As is our practice, we look at the required debt service over the next five years to best ensure that we are able to build up the needed debt service funding across that time period, rather than having to lump it all into a single fiscal year. If we use the traditional approach in order to be prepared for debt service necessary in fiscal '25, we would need to add $1 million each year for the next three fiscal years to be prepared for fiscal '25. If we use the ban approach, as David indicated, this would not require the addition of any debt service in fiscal '23 to be prepared for the servicing of that debt. But I do want to point out that as we issue the debt, it would require us to pay that debt in a ban approach over 25 years rather than 20 years. So this will cause us to have an additional cost of perhaps as much as $11 million over the 25 years. And we'll continue to look at those two approaches and ensure that we are clearly defining the estimated additional cost due to that approach. That is all that we have regarding the CIP. Of course, our next steps will be to further review the debt model in consultation with our financial advisors, and we'll return to you in April with our work thus far at that date with potentially a recommendation for how we would like to proceed.
Mayor and council, that is the full briefing. So at this point, obviously, open to any questions about any of the information from the current FY '22 budget to where we are on the FY '23 budget development, the CIP, the, certainly the financing mechanisms that have been identified for financing that capital improvements program, open to any thoughts, questions, or discussion around any of those items.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cal, you mentioned something earlier about the possibility of some discussion over the personal property tax rate. Did you mean today or at some future briefing?
We're, it's up to you all. We knew that there had been some interest from some of the council members of having a discussion around that. Obviously, on the slide that Amelia showed, or Paul, I don't remember who it was now, that showed the FY '22 in particular, estimates of what is realized, you saw that increase that's in personal property tax. And of course, that increase is due largely to the, sort of the pandemic fueled, if you will, lack of supply, I guess is how I would say, and that's driving values up of vehicles, used vehicles, obviously. And I know each of you have received a correspondence from the commissioner's office that kind of showed five examples of what that would mean to just those type, the vehicles that he was able to use as identifier. Obviously, if those dollars are collected and come through as revenue, as is projected, of course, the school benefits from that, school would receive 40% of those dollars that they would apply to the projects, such as what you heard them say earlier, and we, of course, would benefit as well. Now, I will say, because we believe this is, and I think everybody hopes it is, a one-time anomaly, we would want to treat those dollars as one-time dollars. So it's not something we would want to bake into, for example, a salary increase or a debt service. It would be something we would apply to a capital project. We could take something off of the list. You know, you might be able to buy the Belmont Library piece of it, or the Washington Park Pool, or you could do something that we typically cash fund. So for example, we've talked about paving, you can increase the dollars that go toward paving for that year as we go forward. So, but, so it's really up to you all how much discussion, if you want to have. As I think has also been shared with you, our belief at this point is there are only, there's only really one mechanism available at this moment to address that issue, and that is the tax rate. And that, of course, is a permanent action unless you vote again to increase the tax rate in subsequent years. And there is a bill pending in the General Assembly, which would create the opportunity to, under certain circumstances, rebate back some of those dollars. Of course, that bill has not yet passed, and we don't know what those mechanisms would look like until that bill has passed as we go forward. But the bills, I think, as the commissioner indicated in his letter, you know, as a matter of fact, the book currently is essentially nearing completion, and then by early April, those, the book is completed and the bills go out with it. So that's, those are, that's my two-minute sort of summary of the different components of that piece, and then really up to you all what you'd like to do.
So the projected revenues for the next fiscal year have already taken into account that increase in values of the?
The projected into the next year is projected to return us back to that trend line. So if you go back, I think it was, it's almost $2 million, I think, year over year.
Personal property. I can't quite read that.
Yeah, so the personal property, you know, the FY '22 adopted was 24.7, and we're projecting it 26.7, is that the right number? 26, yeah, 26.7. We have historically seen an increase, obviously, year over, we not typically have seen a $5 million increase kind of year over, or a $3 million increase year over year. So we've tried to return back to that trend line and not anticipate that that pattern will continue. There's a lot of national research out there right now that indicates that won't be the case as the supply chain loosens, but kind of as David mentioned earlier, right now, who kind of knows? I mean, if things continue, especially continue with supply chain issues, that could continue to affect not only used cars, but new cars as well. But right now, we're not anticipating that same kind of growth year over year as what you're experiencing in this current year.
So the $26,720,000 FY '23 estimate, I'm still not clear, is that counting in the increase in used car values that we've seen, or is that not factored into this?
We have a slide, well, let me, so we go from, I'll try to do these two numbers. So FY '22 adopted personal property was 24.7.
Right.
So that was our adopted. We're estimating 28.4 this year, so that's realizing that bump, if you will. If you then look forward to '23, we're going from that 24.7 to 26.7. So we're actually estimating $2 million less than what we're receiving this year because we do not anticipate that trend to continue. So we expect, we expect those values to actually decline again, as is often the case, where you see the used values go down and new car values are what are adding to that. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, so the 28.4 is taking into consideration the increase as compared to the 24.750 that we budgeted for at the beginning.
Correct, correct. So we're anticipating growth like we would any normal year, but not like what we're seeing this year. So the real issue is really that 3.6 million that is estimated to occur this year that we, that exceeds our budget amount, most of which is attributable to that bump in values.
I think your point about waiting to see what the General Assembly comes up with, they're due to wrap up their work for the year at the end of this week, although the governor apparently is already suggesting that. the Governor apparently is already suggesting that the session may be extended to finalize the budget. But certainly before the 1st of April, we should know if they've given us another option in terms of how we want to deal with that or not.
And I think you all know that throughout the session, there were numerous bills introduced around this topic. None, none have really survived, other than this one that actually Sutroline and McNamara are sponsors of, which would amend an existing, allows a rebate of property tax to include personal property. So that, that appears to be the one piece right now that the General Assembly has out there that could address this issue, or at least create an option to address the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if you, if we could, while I can agree with Mr. Best Pitch and have listened to Mr. Cow, I would ask to be indulged that the Commissioner of Revenue has taken the time to come, if we could hear from him with regards to those, with regards to the personal property tax increase in the ratio, if he's still here.
Yeah, I think, I think he stepped out.
He stepped back out, okay. But in talking with him and having had the opportunity to speak with other localities, they are having those conversations with their council, and I just think that we do need to consider what we can do for the, for the taxpayers. While Mr. Spencer did mention that we only had one option, I am hearing that there are some things that could be done for the, for the public with those that will be receiving this high increase. And I just feel that while some of the local governments desiring not to overburden their citizens are leaning towards allowing the local Commissioner to adjust that assessment ratio in order to lower the personal property taxes due as close to the 21 levels, and as, as Mr. Cow has said, that this trend will probably go back to being normal. But however, I just think that the authority for locality to collaborate with the Commissioner on the use of a different evaluation ratio, even if it's on a temporary basis, it can be found in the Virginia Coast section that was quoted by Mr. Spencer, and that it has been reported that this dramatic increase in that NADA values, again, due largely to temporary market conditions. And I just believe that the citizens deserve every consideration that we can give them, since their real estate tax assessments have gone up over about an average of 14%, and that we're also going to be looking to raise the stormwater fees incrementally over the next five years. And you take in consideration with the gas prices, the groceries, utilities, everything is going up. And if we can grant, council can grant some kind of reduction in this instance, I do believe that we do owe that to our citizens to do that.
Well, let me just say, we can, we're not prepared to go into in-depth discussion on that yet until we get some more information on the ramifications of that action, if we want to take that action. So I'm gonna, and we can maybe get Mr. The Commissioner at another date, but right now, we're gonna have to, to close and go into recess for our closed meeting, and, and we'll go from there. But there are a lot more things need to be discussed before we take any action regarding taxes. All right?
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I just have one question regarding this. Bob, do we have a timeline with this? If there's any action involved, do we need to have, I mean, I understand what you're saying. We have to have deep discussions about this.
Right.
But if, if there are actions that need to be made, do we have to make these actions sooner than later?
The, if you're going to act on the tax rate, that has to, frankly, that had to occur in the discussion at the budget retreat, probably, because that's what, that's what the Commissioner and the Treasurer use to build their book and get their, their bills ready, all of which is already underway. And that's if the rate's the only mechanism that you have. The rebate option that's being discussed at the General Assembly, that, that does not have a timeline attached to it yet. Now, when they pass the, if they pass it, there will be. Understand, under that scenario, the bills will go out with the values, and then you will, as a council, have an option at that point, if it is approved, to evaluate, to pass an ordinance that rebates some amount of those dollars back. Now, I will say, part of the mechanics of that is trying to figure out, how do you reconcile the 40% component that goes to the schools, because otherwise, any such rebate would be borne completely by the, by the general fund. That does not have the same kind of, because again, bills go out. If it's passed, then you start evaluating that, that piece of it. I think the, the item that was raised by the council member regarding using a different assessment approach, I would leave that up to the, to the city attorney to give you sort of an answer regarding that, because the city, the Commissioner's Office, as far as I understand, has always used the same approach in terms of assessing values on the property. But, so, so there's no, so that's why, the two, the two mechanisms that I know, change the rate, that has a timeline attached to it. The rebate piece does not, until the bill is passed, then we'll know what that timeframe looks like. Obviously, that would be sometime after the bills are sent out and after revenue has started to be collected.
All right. Council will be in recess until 2:00 P.M.